All right, family, we're here at the Town Hall today. You guys know where the Town Hall is at?
Yep.
Follow you or how you doing?
I don't know where I'm going.
Uh oh. How you doing today?
Good, thank you.
Uh oh, some nuff room. How you guys doing?
Good.
How are you all?
Pretty good.
How are you?
Welcome, come on in.
How you all?
Good.
Grab some handout?
How you doing?
Good. Hello. Grab some handout, happy to be here.
So, good evening, everyone. Is everyone hearing? Okay, if you can't, I don't think we have a microphone unless, yeah, we don't have a microphone, but we'll all speak as above as possible for you. Appreciate you taking the time to be out here this evening, especially because it is an absolutely beautiful world. So, my name's Tom McAdrey, and I'm fortunate to be here at the City of Rockford. This evening, we will talk for about fifteen to seventeen minutes between the three of us. I hope me, myself, Jennifer Tethalia, and Chief Redd. And then we've been here for, if you have questions, if you have concerns, thoughts, or ideas, we want to hear from you. And then we'll go back, and if we have the answers, we're going to share them with you. If we don't, we're going to go back, get those answers, and make sure that you get the information that you need. I'm going to be pretty brief at the beginning. I'll probably talk much longer during questions. But overall, the strategy that we're trying to, and have been implementing at the City of Rockford is really a two parallel trap system. And I break it down in my head as enforcement, and I break it down as intervention and prevention. So, myself and the city council, over the last several years, have invested heavily into our police department, and that is from the enforcement standpoint. We now have budgeted about a forty percent increase in that department, and a lot of it is around technology and the use of technology, which we like to call a force multiplier. So, some of that technology, just so you're aware of, is additional cameras in high-traffic or high-crime areas. It is more than one hundred and fifty mobile and stationary license plate readers. It is gunshot detection software. It is social analytics software. Just recently, we purchased, well, all of our officers have, all of our patrol vehicles have dash cameras, and all of our officers have body cameras. But most recently, we have heard, not just at these meetings, but at many other neighborhood meetings, a strong concern around traffic violations, specifically speeding. So, we're doing a lot in that area, but one thing that we just purchased was to ensure that all of our patrol vehicles, not just the traffic unit, but now all of our patrol vehicles, have radar detection, automatic radar detection equipment in those. We have, as I mentioned at a meeting earlier today, which some of you were at, so good to see you again. We have authorized it. They need to be purchased, need to be installed, and then out on the streets. So, that will take some time. I can tell you, council has been incredibly supportive of those efforts when it is around supporting the police department, so they have the tools they need to do their job efficiently, effectively, safely for them, as well as citizens. And I think council has done a great job from that standpoint. The second trap is really, to me, equally, if not more important, and probably for sure more important long-term. We need to stop the violence that's taken place in our city over decades. And so, we use an approach that Jennifer will probably be far more articulate than I am, but to break it down for someone like me to understand, we use an approach that really couples a number of things. One is, we listen to the community. So, these meetings are important. If you have ideas, concepts, things you're seeing in other communities, whatever you may have, we want to hear. And we then will listen to it, work to bring partners together, and implement a plan for them. And we use data. So, we know, for an example, sixty, we know today fifty percent of our violence is domestic violence. We know that of all the youth we're arresting for violent offenses, sixty to seventy-five percent of those youth from 2016 through 2023 grew up in a household where there was physical or sexual violence taking place. So, we know they experienced something very real, trauma. And that's only one form of that trauma. There's lots of other forms. We talked today at a meeting about food despots. That can be a form of trauma. Poverty can be a form of trauma. And it can go on and on. So, we know that those young people, our children, experiencing that trauma, need assistance. And we know the best thing, one of the best things that we can do is wrap our arms around those young kids at a very early age to ensure that they have the resources they need, their family has the resources they need. So, through Jennifer's office, and Jennifer is the executive director of the mayor's office of Domestic and Community Violence Prevention, through her office, she has either started or expanded and partnered with, for probably between twenty and twenty-five, different programs and initiatives, many of which, over the last two years, is really focused on youth. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, so she can dive into the work of her office, and then you'll hear from Chief Redd, and then we'll take questions from you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you all for being here tonight. As the mayor said, we appreciate you coming out to listen to us. Two things that are very important to our office is that we are data-driven and we are community-centered. And so, without your feedback, we don't have anywhere to go next. And so, everything that I'm going to talk to you about tonight was directly informed by listening sessions and feedback from community members like you, and community forums like you, or direct one-on-one listening sessions with survivors of domestic or sexual violence. As the mayor mentioned, as we sit here with you all tonight, domestic violence made up nearly fifty percent of our violent crime rate last year. And that is a number that is certainly something that we are paying attention to. We watch calls for service very, very closely. It's not our end-all-be-all number, but we need to see those calls for service continue to come in. We know that the key to getting survivors and their children on pathways to open recovery is getting them to come into an ecosystem that we are trying to create where they feel safe engaging with our system. And so, one of the things that we want them to do is continue to call. We want those numbers to continue to go up, because to be clear, not everyone in our community who needs help recovering from this violence is yet feeling safe calling anything to you with our system. So, it is something that we need to continue to watch, because getting them on their pathways to recovery is one of our primary objectives, and we're doing that at the Rockford Family Peace Center. The Rockford Family Peace Center opened in July of 2020, and that is a one-stop location where survivors of domestic and sexual violence, human trafficking, elder abuse, and child abuse, and their entire family can walk into one door and receive wraparound services for long-term healing and recovery. To date, we will be four. Next month, we opened in July, right in the middle of the pandemic. And today, we've served over nineteen hundred survivors. Over four hundred of those clients are kids, I'm going to say that again. Over four hundred of the clients we've served at the Rockford Family Peace Center are children who have been exposed to domestic or sexual violence, coming through that door with their families. And that is so key to interrupting that trauma just as soon as we can to get our kids on the road to recovery. And speaking of our kids, one of the places that we are really proud to talk to you about is something that was modeled after the Family Peace Center, and that's called the Community Healing Center. We opened it right over here at the Kilburn Avenue Boys and Girls Club. We have two phenomenal navigators there, Deanna Hernandez and Mike Wallace, who work directly with our community to provide the same sort of services that we're providing at the Family Peace Center, except for any child exposed to violence. Those victimization qualifications at the Family Peace Center around domestic and sexual violence are not at the Community Healing Center. So, any child, and by child, we mean anybody under the age of twenty-five, that's the state of Illinois definition, and there's a good reason for that. But any child under the age of twenty-five who has been exposed to any violence can walk into the door and be connected with a navigator and long-term wraparound services, not only for them, but for any parent or caretaker in the household. And so, it's an exceptionally important program. We launched it at the Boys and Girls Club just a couple of months ago, and I'm really happy to report that we're already expanding. We're looking at two other locations that we're going to be hosting satellite offices at, and we hope to launch those before the end of the summer. The third program that I want to talk to you about is also very much connected to children, but through sort of a different pathway, and it is our Lethality Prevention Division. Our Lethality Prevention Division is just what it sounds like, it's homicide prevention. And it is comprised of three multidisciplinary teams whose sole effort is to look at the highest-risk cases of domestic violence and figure out how to stop the violence from continuing. One of those teams is our Strangulation Task Force. Our Strangulation Task Force got to work very early at the inception of our office, because we heard from survivors that the way an EMT, the way a first responder responds to them and interacts with them on scene can and will dictate whether or not they will call again. And so, we knew we had to get to our dispatchers just as soon as possible. They do a phenomenal job, but we can always, all would do better, right? And so, we trained them up on how to screen for strangulation calls, how to ask questions, and what not to say on those nine-one-one calls with our survivors. And then we implemented a continuum that required an automatic medical response to the scene if the survivor has been strangled. And I want you all to understand how imperative that is, because if somebody is being strangled, they are seven hundred, seven hundred times more likely to die at the hands of their concern. And when somebody has been strangled, we often think at the end of the strangulation, they're still alive. We passed it, right? The danger's gone, and it's not. We have got to get them to the emergency room as soon as possible, so that there can be internal imaging, figure out if there are any clots or any other asphyxia that's happened internally that can prevent their long-term recovery. And that is important, again, not only for them, but also for their babies and for our babies, because getting them back to their healing and recovery as soon as possible with any diagnosis is a long-term treatment. As a result of that strangulation, survivors and data tells us this quick over to the recovery of our community. And then finally, the last project that I want to talk to you about is a real-time boot-up round street response. We collaborate with a local nonprofit with credible messengers who also work directly with the City of Rockford Police Department and respond to shootings in real time. This team receives a notification of shots fired and then responds to the scene to try to intervene and prevent retaliatory violence and get those survivors of the gun violence wrapped in services. And also, if the perpetrator is interested, we will offer services to them as well. The goal is to stop retaliation and to find a pathway to peace. And so, those are the four projects that I wanted to highlight for you all tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Redd, so that she can pick up the baton here and tell you a little bit about her.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here. It's great that you came out to get the information that we have to offer. I'm just going to share a quick few statistics with you and then jump into some of the stuff that Jennifer's office is doing with the police department. She hit the highlights of some things, and I want to thank, we have Officer McAdely in the back. And I tell you, just standing here as Chief of Police with the Rockford Police Department, I can tell you right now, I couldn't have a group of men and women that work harder than what they do to keep the city safe. For those who are coming to visit, those that live here, those that may just work in the area. Just real quick, I want to share, we're looking at our data year-over-year. We're constantly looking at our numbers to see where we are, where we might need to improve. We learn to celebrate the small wins within the police department. And I'll share with you, looking at our 2023 data, where we had a nineteen percent decrease in violent crime. Roughly, the mayor and Jennifer both spoke about the domestic violent-related crime accounting for about fifty percent of our violent crime. When I talk about the twenty percent reduction in violent crime, that's the lowest that we've been in the past eight years. So, also, I'm celebrating big time with our homicide clearance rates. Although our homicide rate was up thirty-three percent from 2022 to 2023, we had an eighty-five percent clearance rate. That does not happen just by chance. I'm thankful for our community members that are stepping up and saying they're sick and tired of the violence that's been taking place, as well as the mayor touched briefly on technology. Technology is a big win for the police department, so I'm thankful for our older persons that are in the room and for the mayor's office that support us as we look to advance our technology to help in combating crime across the city. Also, our aggravated assault rate was down by twenty percent. Our shots fired was down by another thirty-one percent. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention that when we look at our gun recoveries across the city, we had our highest gun recovery ever in 2021, where we recovered a little over four hundred guns. Since that time, we've consistently averaged over three hundred gun recoveries every year. So, that also attributes to that. Real quick, the mayor touched on our traffic citations. We do, we attend a lot of meetings. My officers attend a lot of meetings, they hear the complaints. I said COVID, right around COVID, when we came off of COVID, things really took a turn, where our traffic complaints just spiraled out of control. So, as the mayor mentioned, we are receiving in-car moving radars for all of our patrol cars, so it won't be just our traffic unit. And right now, we're averaging about ten thousand citations a year, so that's how big of an issue it is. And I can tell you right now, we'll definitely surpass that number for 2024. Jennifer didn't mention handle with care, so this is not law enforcement as you see on TV. We've definitely taken a shift, even in the amount of time that I've been on the police department, where you're just focusing on, you know, fight crime, fight crime, fight crime. We have to invest in our folks that are returning back to our community, because those that are returning, we want them to be productive members of the community, as well as our kids that are growing up and being exposed to violent crime. So, I often say that the police department is data-rich, because we are. Once we have contact with a young person and they're documented in our system, we can continue to track them. So, what my office did with Jennifer's office is, we sat down and we looked at juveniles that seemingly were more involved in violent crime and kind of looked at their history and seeing what they had been exposed to. Jennifer's office has done a phenomenal job at recognizing not only the exposure, but what you need to do to help mitigate that trauma that they've been involved in. And it's not enough just to service the kids, you have to service the entire family, because otherwise, you're just, you're helping one person within that unit, and there's utter chaos that continues to go on around them. I just want to say, from the police department's standpoint, a lot of people may not know, but we actually run a youth explorer program within the police department. So, we have kids that come in on a weekly basis, and they don't necessarily have to develop, you know, we're not necessarily grooming them into being officers, but you have officers that are spending time with them and giving them structure, otherwise that they may be lacking at home. Also, this summer, we're running, and there's some material over there, I just have some in front of me, we're running safety camps this summer for students that are entering the third grade, as well as the Rockford Police Youth Academy. So, the academies are for kids, kids that are thirteen to eighteen years of age. And also, we're hiring. So, always take a recruitment opportunity if I can. So, if you know anyone that is twenty years of age, they just have to be twenty-one by the time they graduate from the academy. We're taking applications right now through July thirty-first. If I had it to do all over again, I would, so I think it's an awesome career. And got a young officer in the back that could attest, and she'll be more than happy to talk to you as well. And I tell you what, I was not that person, that young person, that wanted to be a police officer when I grew up. It was something that, you know, with my exposure to some officers that were on the department and who brought their job, that kind of what geared me toward policing. And also, technology-wise, I'm going to share this piece before I take my seat. TIP 411, that's a program that we invested in. It's been two years, Mayor?
Yeah, eighteen months.
Eighteen months, somewhere in there. So, when I talk about the collaboration with the community, I want everyone to be safe and secure in their home. I recognize the fact that typically, the most important or the highest thing a person will buy, the most money they will spend something on is their home. And I don't want your neighbors to know that you call the police if you're having an issue, because I don't want that retaliatory thing to take place. So, we, you know, you can call the police anonymously. I tell people all the time, fighting crime is like putting pieces of a puzzle together, and I'd rather you call me with that tip bit of information that you have, and we respond to investigate it. TIP 411 is another entity that you can utilize just to get the information to the police anonymously. So, it's through an app on your phone, you can submit a tip, and nobody ever knows. If you don't tell, we don't even know who the tip came from. But, so there's all kinds of avenues that we have out there. We just want to hear from the community as a whole. And I'm going to take one.
Before you do that, before you take a seat, do that one thing you did mention.
Oh, I didn't mention the Citizens Police Academy. I saw John sticking his finger up. John has been through two or three.
Two.
Two Citizens Police Academies. So, John, I'll encourage you to come back in the fall, because they're completely revamping it. So, we typically do the Citizens Police Academy twice a year, and we're, we're really going to kick it up this year.
Want to know about Rockford, you would take that citizen, the way I, reading I know Rockford is from taking that class.
All right, I'm taking my seat, and somebody's.
Just very briefly, I would be remiss, before we hand it over to the mayor for questions, if I did not highlight the fact that every program I talk about has a significant component of it. Whether it's the Family Peace Center, where we offer adult counseling, or child plate therapy, whether it's the Strangulation Task Force, where the advocates that we're not going to be embedding in the emergency room at UW Health Systems are going to be doing navigation around survivors who come into the ER, who've been strangled, who are, who've been involved in a domestic violence situation, or the Healing Center, where our babies are getting connected to services, or the gun violence response, where those persons, a dozen people, are continuing to get wraparound services. And so, I would encourage you to take the sheets that are in the back that give you a few more opportunities to learn more about our projects, but whether it's the barber shop project, that we're working with actual barbers to increase their capacity, to talk to and experience the people in their chair and in the community about mental health, or whether or not it's the stuff that we're doing in Rockford Public School, where we're trying to work so hard with them to help them understand that it is imperative that we get therapists within the buildings, so that they can be there for our kids during the day where our kids already are, and not ask our parents to do another thing after work, right? Or whether it's going to the juvenile detention center and talking to them about how we need to have a navigator. When our babies come into the juvenile detention center, if reverse offenses are after, there should be somebody in that building that is scheduled to meet with them to figure out what trauma, what has happened that is making this child engage in behavior that is getting them into trouble. And so, I just wanted to name that. Everything we do, we do through the lens of mitigating trauma. And so, now, I'm going to answer the ultimate train's questions, and then I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Alderman, Serena. I just wanted to, you're using the term wraparound services. I just want the residents to be aware of what that means.
Yes, ma'am. So, what that means is that if I walk into one of the buildings or go into one of the programs that we've talked about, they're going to do a complete triage of what I need, right? And so, that's going to be immediately, what do I need that night to be safe? Have I eaten? Do I have someplace safe to go? Do I have a medical condition that I need to get taken care of? They're also then going to want me to come back or set another appointment, so that we can start talking about our kids, right? Do you have children in the home? Where do they go to school? Do they need help advocating for an IEP? Do they need help getting connected to an advocate inside that building? Is there another adult in the home? Is that adult without work? Does that adult need to get a copy of their birth certificate, because they need to go and apply for a job? But that barrier is just simply too much. And I'm here to tell you all, sometimes it is. You may not like it, but it is. And we can argue about whether or not it should be a barrier, or we can help our community get to it. And so, the wraparound services that we provide are, who's in the house? What do they need, so that we can put them in a better, more empowered position to take care of themselves and their families?
I have questions for you before you sit down.
Yes, ma'am.
What are you going to do to break the barrier? A lot of people have deep paid towards DCSF. You, y'all organizations do not work with grassroots organizations. You only work with organizations that's within the, within the system and whatever, they get paid through the system. Grassroots organizations, like you, for example, One Hundred Strong, Beautiful Beginning, a renewal attorney point program. We had a consultation where I referred a couple of people to y'all program, and I was alienated, and I'm the one that referred them to y'all program. A lot of our, a lot of y'all rules and regulations follow DCSF. DCSF's got a lot of rules and regulations that's outdated, and, and they treat, they treat us like sub-human beings. They are the destroyers of families and what in. So, a lot of people do not trust DCSF, and y'all like the face of DCSF. So, a lot of your referrals, you get, you get through the court system or through the police system. And, because I'm, I know a lot of people who would not turn to y'all, because they don't want DCSF involving they, and they like, then I'm going to end by saying this, your program should not be a nine-to-five program. Domestic violence is seven days a week, twenty-four hours after day. We have invited y'all to events where obviously, well, they, it's a holiday, they don't work on holiday. And what in, you should be, y'all should be able to show up twenty-four hours after day, seven days after week, whatever the case may be, arrive. So, what are you going to do to work with grassroots organizations?
So, that's to unpack there, so let me start and push back. We agree on a couple of things, and we don't agree on a couple of things you said. So, first of all, we do work with grassroots organizations.
No, you do not.
We do. We actually pay them out of our office, because I'm all foible, I'm not going to argue with you about it.
There's not an argument. What we're asking for, you know, you were.
While we're using with Aid 105 Get Connected, the barber shops, the barber shop mentorship program was built with grassroots people, that we actually work with people in the community and build collaboration in community. So, we are doing grassroots stuff. We don't do anything without our community voice, and that's just a fact, sir. I couldn't agree with you more about DCFS. DCFS is atrocious and needs to be addressed. The laws that we follow at the Rockford Family Peace Center are there for the protection of the survivor. And I'm not going to apologize to that, because you would get the same protection if you walked into ours. When somebody comes into the Peace Center or any other organization that is serving survivors of domestic and sexual violence in this community, their funding is tied to confidentiality. And if we do not have a release of information to give you, as well-meaning as any of us are, you, you want to know why, what's, what's going on, because you want to continue to help. And I completely understand that. But confidentiality laws prevent us from giving any information to anybody without a release of information from a survivor. And DCFS, as I said, I couldn't agree with you more. They're at our table, we're talking to them, they actually have come to us to ask us for some help in addressing their system. And so, the nine-to-five also, couldn't agree with you more. We need to expand our hours. We don't have funding, so we are doing the best that we can with the capacity that we do.
You keep talking about, well, the grassroots organizations out here helping people without any funding, and what in?
Yeah, so, I mean, as the elderly men who are here know, I mean, a big thing for us, John, really is, we need the funding to keep all of these people employed, in a building, those lights on, the bathrooms clean, all that. I, you're not going to find someone who wants that center open twenty-four-seven more than this woman right here.
We know attorney fund ain't getting no funding, but we out here twenty-four hours a day, out here in these streets, helping our kids and whatever. We work with hardcore kids, at-risk, at-risk kids. I do have a question for the, we need some light from the school board here, but they're not here. But I do have a question for the Chief of Police. If you look at the statistics, we have over four thousand seven hundred eighty-nine African-American youths suspended out of school. We had three hundred and fifty-nine expelled out of school. How many of them youths that was expelled and suspended out of school, out here committing crime? And if we can find a way with the school system and the numbers that's been expelled out of school, giving them kids something to do to prevent them from committing crimes in the streets, we've been knocking down by eighty, by eighty percent, but we don't have nobody from the school system to address that. But I bet you, if you look at your system, you look at your record, how many of them kids were suspended or expelled out of school?
So, John, I'll be more than happy to tell you, I've requested that information, the mayor's office requested that information in regards to those kids that are out of school, so suspended or expelled, so that we can get them involved in programming. You don't have names. You can give me numbers all day long, but I need names to associate, so I know who these kids are. Because I can guarantee you, like you said, they've been involved in other things in the system. But without those names, and I don't have it from the school board, I can't tell you that information.
So, but to that, you bring up, you bring up a really wonderful thought and point. My only thing I would add to it is, that information and data that you want, I think is critical. The information I really want is a step or two before that. Those kids whose grades have dramatically changed, their absenteeism has changed, their discipline has changed. The school system does have an internal, is it panic school, is that right? Panoramic. I mean, have a system, they have a system that, it sounds like an amazing tool. And I understand the confidentiality with children, and I'm not saying Tom McAdrey needs to have all this data, but I think there could be data-sharing agreements, that when we see that young Tom McAdrey who was getting Bs, is now getting Bs, all of a sudden, or that Tom attended school pretty darn regularly, and then all of a sudden shifted, or Tom is acting out and getting pretty angry and upset about things, and something... The teachers know who's, who's behavior has changed. I want that, because I don't want to wait till they've been kicked out, they've been expelled, they went through all this process. I want to have wraparound services that we can say, all right, Tom, maybe we should talk to the council, see what's going on. And then maybe we can do some wraparound services that Jennifer was talking about, bring in some grassroots folks that have lived experience, that can help with some of these real issues that are in our people.
And that's why I say working with the system, because I gank them by information. Ninety percent of the kids I work with, they're. Ninety percent of the kids I work with is the hardcore kids getting kicked out of school. So I gangsta my information, but if I was working for the system, I'd be fired because the system prevents you from what you just said.
Foreign representative.
Oh, good, thank you. Um, I actually had two questions if possible. So handle with care to your example of this shift in a child's behavior. That is now embedded in RPS 205 or no?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. So you guys kind of know, something happened the night before, this may impact Tom when he comes to school. He may be grumpy, he may be whatever. Excellent. Um, Jen, you mentioned helping with birth certificates. So we did a lot of work and by we, my former colleagues and currently Representative West, Representative Bella, Senator Stollman, a lot of work around people who are returning from IDOC. And there's a new law that says they're supposed to be um released with a state ID. However, I have encountered a young man that I knew when he was a juvenile and unfortunately he did spend some time in IDOC, released just last week, no ID, no birth certificate, no social security card. And you can't get any of them unless you have one or two of the other. So I don't know, I mean, he's not involved in anything, he's just trying to come home and be a good citizen, but you know, who could help him?
I'm, I'm going to suggest that you contact um eight one five, yeah, because they do significantly reentry support.
Yeah, I mean, I, thank you, cause I even said like, maybe the school system has a copy of your birth certificate. Well, he doesn't have two pieces of ID to go back to RPS 205 to get his birth certificate.
Yep. It's, eight one five does remarkable things with um with our community members who are reentering, so that's where I, that's where I'd go.
And thank you so much.
Human services too. I'm into human services as well.
Yep.
To help get.
Human services may be able to help with payment and stuff too.
Thanks.
Hi, um, so I have a question on things and pathways, pathways to peace. Um, one of the biggest issues, and um I work with y'all sometimes and we got a lot of these people besides, I mean, over 500 people a month that live in service. Um, the fact that, you know, is even looking at this list, this of programs, a lot of the kids that we serve can't last a day in some of these programs.
Yep.
And so what happened is, we are here for like, so we have a private school that we, um, eight years now, we have a private school was created for kids that's kicked out of public schools. Um, and I can tell you a numerous volunteers have came and tried to help. Um, but the good thing about our first two years, we returned 17 kids the first year to public school, the next year we returned 23 children back to public schools. And so every year we getting kids that's kicked out of public school. With that being said, these kids are to a point where it can't be by control. So when we can come back, mannerable and respectful and even we work with the parents to get some of the kids back on track. Um, it's kind of hard when you can't relate to some of these children and these parents. So when we talking about making a difference in the city, we're not going to agree to everything, but we have to be on a common goal to make a difference. And regardless if you're an organization or just a human, wanting to see something different in the city, it don't have to always be about money. The money going to come.
Thank you.
When we start making a change, then that's what we need to start doing. Because for me, half of these organizations, I heard about and I thank them for doing this, but some of the kids we work with is blood swelling tears. And this is why I'm at this meeting today, cause I'm literally on tears, serving hundreds of kids and we're not getting any help. And with that being said, like, it's other people that don't have an organization that want to help. Where do they go? When keep the kids get shot, they're calling our organizations, the grassroots can get no regulation, no money, they, anything we get, we get on the government level. We get it from the private education or the government, nothing from the city. So the fact that the city, we're not bothering them. But the problem is, when we see getting these families in, these kids in, if you can't relate, it's hard to reach. So you, some of us can't tell people what to do by the end of the month when they ain't got the money, or they ain't got the food stamps, or these kids got to go out and now they, now the stealing cars is hot. You understand what I'm saying? But if you can't relate to some of these kids, how can you go tell them, you need to stop stealing the car? Let me take you to get a driver's license. Let me take you, you know, the kids who got 17 to 18 that dropped out of school doing nothing? So we only can serve so much without none of these programs stepping up. Now, I'm not knocking nobody, but if we can get some help from one of these programs that actually serve the kids that's low income, no income, and real at-risk children, that's what we need. And I, and I, and I'm just, however, whoever we out of contact, we have a list of kids. When I say literally, we serve 500 people a month and we got data to show. And parents just coming in needing our help and we go above and beyond. And we get other parents to come in and help us that's not part of the organization. Some women as single moms want to help other single moms. And so that's where we at, so we really need the help more than any of that.
Are you Beautiful Beginnings?
Yeah.
Um, Brandon Cholman in our office, um, who oversees the Violence Protection Coordinated Council for our team and is, that's actually run by Fertia Flowers. Um, that's the best pathway to getting involved with us. Um, because they're coordinating the community response at the grassroots level, they're individuals on that board and they're organizations funded and not funded. And so that's what I would suggest is the starting point for the conversation and then figuring out what the next best steps are from that.
Okay, so I want to say this to you. Before eight one five, the eight one five connect got started, me and Ms. Flowers had a meeting and I was telling Ms. Flowers, before she started this eight one five, it connected Beautiful Beginnings, open and running with the program. So even with that, I kind of vented to her a little bit on the, on the ropes of this. I even met with her a couple of times. So it's kind of hard for us to go back and what we created and we actually have data and we got numbers and we have people to come to us, now we got to come back around because this is who the city fund, this is who the city believe in. So now we got to say, hey, can you help us? We know what's going on, but now we have almost dumb ourselves down to get in the door. And so that's kind of hard, just like the barber shop thing. The barber shops, we deal with a lot of ours and we'll have our kids going in, but my thing is, it's almost like a click in Rockford. And so if you click then, then it's hard to get the help. It's not even about the funding at this point.
Yep.
We want to make a difference, we want to see a change in our community. So the dollars is not the biggest issue. The biggest issue is seeing our children getting out of school, leaving the projects, being, get, we got 12 graders on second grade reading level. This is what's important to us. How can we make that change? How can we get some together when these boys are stealing cars and and they riding around, joyriding at people's cars that they spend money to, their mamas don't want to say nothing because they don't know what to do with them. You see what I'm saying? So when we can relate to them and we can talk to the parents and pull them in and say, what can we do in our community to really make a difference?
And I, and I hear what you're saying, I, I hear your feedback to me on, on eight one five, I hear that. That is really the best way because it is a council of people, it is a council of multiple organizations and people and we are going into the schools and having these conversations. If you want a seat at the table to talk to someplace like the juvenile detention center, we're there, we're bringing grassroots people to us. If you want to see a deal with school, we're there. We are, you and I met too, I think, right?
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I love your organization, I know what you guys doing. Uh, it's incredible, whatever's going on with eight one five and you guys, but let's just put that out of the way.
Oh, I just want to make a difference.
Yeah, so come to the table and see what we can do to work together. I want to be clear that we don't fund eight one five, the state of Illinois does. Um, we don't fund them. So we're not a funding agency, we do contracts with grassroots members who are individuals because we don't want anybody working for free. Um, but we don't fund organizations out of our office. So um, walking to the table, we think sincerely we're at the table. So please consider reaching out at least to me, um, so we can talk.
Can I add and maybe you can, and I know you said far more eloquently than I can, uh, but at some point, funding is, right? And I can keep doing that. Um, one thing that if we're not directly funding and we can also help with is the state grant process can be uh with the best intentions, incredibly complex and difficult, and what we have found incredibly difficult for grassroots organizations to get that funding and help maintain that fund. One thing that we have been able to do, uh, we don't fund eight one five get connected, but we have uh helped with that grant process, with calling the uh, the uh Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority saying, hey, they applied for this funding, where is it at? Helping because you, you're doing the hard work. Let us do the, the pestering of the state agencies versus funding, versus funding, that's also a reason we can be helpful.
The, the technical, he's really talking about technical assistance, right? And so we tried to offer some grant writing classes for grass, new grassroots organizations to just get their, an understanding of it, but we will provide technical assistance for organizations that are working with us to try to fill one of those gaps. And that's exactly what he's talking about. We've done it with um, we've done it with CCS, um, we've built and we've done it with eight one five, so we're happy to do that.
No, there's here and then you, left you, John.
Oh, there's that.
Oh, I'm back, sorry.
Uh, I just want to make, I want to make comment and I had two questions. Um, the things that you're talking about, the grassroots work that you're doing, you know, I, I think we respect it. And you know what, being a strong mental health supporter, it has a huge impact on mental health. So I would strongly encourage you to look into funding from our local, with the Bay Hill County Department of Health, okay? It's all determined by how you write the grant and how it's about children's mental health, okay? So if you need some help, I'll be happy to help you with that.
You don't have to write.
Um, I have, I have given the chief a question earlier on paper, but I want to ask Dennis for something really quickly. I know this regulation is, is something that's horribly on the rise, or lies to the, no more, yes, no more. So are you working with the state's attorney's office to actually have people use um attempted murder, murder ring?
So we have worked with the state's attorneys. Our strangulation task force developed a strangulation supplemental form and that was put into place about a year ago. So now every Rockford Police Department, every Rockford Police Officer and everyone in Bay Hill County Sheriff's Department has that strangulation supplement on scene. So when they arrive, we worked with the state's attorney's office to create this form. They're collecting the evidence that we need in a criminal prosecution if that survivor's not able to continue to be able to prove themselves. We met with Jay Hanley about two months ago now and he reported that 100% of the cases that are coming in with those supplements are being charged with aggravated strangulation. Um, and so getting to attempt murder, they're all, that's a case by case scenario, right? With things that are said, evidence that's on scene. But what I would tell you is that he is not somebody that's pretty committed to improving criminal response to domestic violence.
Does he have help in that?
They very much do, yeah, very much do.
So Chief, I'm going to speak to you on the spot to talk about the other big mental health concerns here.
Do you want to ask your question so everybody can hear?
Okay, I was asking the chief to talk about EXESA, which has now been, you know, well over two years old as a statewide bill, the uh, Community Emergency Support System and where people, instead of police officers going out to respond to people that are in a mental health crisis, it would be mental health professionals. And keep putting it off, okay? I know we're not ready, so what's being done? Because we still have people with that homelessness crisis and the four police officers that are going to be called out and help them.
Well, and, and I guess what I have to add to that, that I didn't tell you earlier, is that we have CCRT, which is our Crisis Co-Response Team, where that we actually, there's a total of seven officers that work within that unit and they all have a clinician that works with them. So when we get those mental health calls, they're able to go out with a clinician. So right now, that's currently, the hours are 6:30 AM to 11:00 PM at night. Of course, they came report a mental health board, they wanted it to be 24/7. And one of the things that we did is we pulled the data and those, after 11:00 PM, it reduced to, I think maybe two calls a week. And the individuals designated to the unit are only allowed to respond to mental health crisis calls. So on the state level in regards to why does this keep getting pushed back? We spoke earlier in regards to um, I'd, I'd say individuals in the profession, having enough people that are available to respond because that's a 24/7 on-call situation. So um, as well as the tracking and some other things that needed to be put in place, those components aren't there yet and which is why it continues to get pushed off. So I know the mayor has some more added to that and I'll let him talk to you.
I believe the most recent pushback was in July 2024 and now they're pushing it back again. I don't know when they're pushing it back to, uh, but we at the city, uh, through the fire department, uh, in our 911 center have purchased and are uh training right now on a software called Pro QA. Um, and that software uh will be coupled with actually having a nurse in our 911 center, uh specifically allowing mental health calls, uh, and making sure that we, and that nurse is ensuring, helping us ensure, I should say, uh, that the proper service is going out to those individuals.
I appreciate you expanding the hours, I think that really did help quite a bit. But is it seven days a week now, Chief?
No, it's not right now, it's five days a week.
Yeah, it's a Saturday and Sunday, not every day.
Correct.
This is kind of place.
Now that, I, I have to mention that also, um, we have officers that are CIT trained. So when I went through my 40-hour training to get, you know, that under my belt, it's made a world of difference because I had no idea what I didn't know until I went to that 40-hour course. So we are actually looking at, and that's some other things on the, on the table, but we are looking at increasing how many officers we have that have that certification.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Oh, yes, um, I was, uh, I want to make a comment, uh, about summer, the kids and the jobs and, uh, I grew up in Cleveland, Ohio. Every summer, the, the program was called CED, I don't remember what the acronym, what the letter said, but that was like a rite of passage. Every kid from like 14 to 18 in high school school, if you go on the job, you had a job, even if it was just, I remember my very first job was working at City Hall in Cleveland. Uh, Dustin and, uh, cutting it down, it was a beautiful, big city hall, twice the size of the city hall in, maybe three times. And it had like, like 50 of us kids that worked there and that was my first summer, you know, dusting, mopping, walking around, pretty much doing nothing. The second year, I was made as the supervisor over with the other kids. My third year working at City Hall, I was actually kind of a establishment secretary or whatever, working with the kids. That helped so much, keeping down the crime and, 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 and helping, you know, the kids, uh, how come the city, we don't have these summer job programs? Blanket, I mean, if you want a job, you got it. It wasn't about, you know, uh, your qualifications or whatever, whatever. But uh, it just made a difference and with these kids that walk for a lot of summer with nothing to do but to get in trouble, you know? And it was almost eight hours a day we were working too.
That's amazing. Uh, and I know Cleveland well, I spent eight years there and they have a much larger city hall than you do. Uh, it is pretty beautiful. Uh, so we don't have a blanket. What I can tell you, uh, Sheree Hunter, our HR director, she's done, I think, a phenomenal job. She's uh more than doubled the number of internships we have, which is great. But talking about a blanket, she's been also worked with probably, don't hold me to the exact number, I would say between eight and 15, probably close to 20, other uh either government bodies or businesses, uh, to increase their internships and they do an internship job fair each year. Uh, we also uh have partnered with uh Tony Turner, uh, who does a water program with our water department.
Conscious coaching.
Conscious coaching. Um, and they take uh young people uh in and they partner with just specifically our water department, so uh he would know all the stats, uh, but there are thousands of the fire hydrants that are out there. Uh, they don't paint themselves, they don't scrape themselves, they don't get tested by themselves, uh, and this amazing group of young people are out there doing it.
Yeah, I see the ones that do the concrete, the sidewalk.
And so then, uh, we did a partnership with Pastor Albert Tank Weathers, uh, and he hires uh young people to build sidewalks. The last two years, they've done two miles each year. Uh, this year they're going to do uh at least two miles uh of sidewalk and our, their focus has been, uh, just so you're aware, it's an, A, it's a great program, B, we're paying those kids $20 an hour while they're learning. All of them have gotten entered into an apprenticeship program with the trades. Um, but uh, the other benefit, if that wasn't enough, the other benefit is uh they're filling in gaps where we need sidewalks and they're going back through uh areas where there's either schools or parks and doing sidewalks as well. Uh, we also uh just uh soon, in about two months, if, if they're on time, uh, we're going to be opening the Women and Minority Entrepreneurial Accelerator with Think Big, uh, with Dr. Sheila Hill and Dante Matthews and their board, uh, over on North Main and uh, with Dr. Sheila Hill and Dante Matthews and their board, uh, over on North Main and Auburn area at the former Jerome Furniture Building. One thing I don't think, uh, probably me, I haven't done a good enough job is, in that development agreement and in that construction, we have also mandated that they hire young people and train them on the vertical trades. We have the horizontal trades with the concrete, then with the vertical. I would love a blanket program, but we're a ways away, but we are trying to grab as many as we can.
I'm just gonna add to that, uh, I don't see anybody here from the Rockford district, but they are a big employer of young folks for the summers.
If I can, picking that off to the mayor. What she said, what she said. We had a Title 20 program, uh, Rock River Training, where we was hiring over five and six thousand kids. Every summer, Ronald Reagan killed that, uh, Title, uh, 20, 20 program. I worked at Rock River Training back during the eighties. I was average between nine and 1,200 kids that we would hire, and they would work all throughout the city and what is. What you, what you mentioned is on the smallest, uh, on the smallest scale than what Rock River Training was doing. What can you do is, uh, ask Rick Springfield to bring them funds back, that Ronald Reagan killed, uh, the Title 20 program.
There are lots of state funds, probably this session, but it has to get out the door.
One, I, I should have mentioned earlier, so, Representative Wallace, correct me if I'm wrong, um, they approved, uh, the SEJA Act, uh, and in that, and there's people here that should be speaking and helping about it, looking right at you, uh, back there. So, uh, I'll give a very high overview. If I misstate something, please, I just heard the presentation. Um, so in a partnership, uh,
Everything.
With, uh, Pastor Hytler's church, with, uh, Waken Foundation, with Workforce Connection, with Goodwill, with a host of other wonderful people, I'll say, uh, they are doing a partnership. I believe they just won a grant for 4.2, 4.8 million in that ballpark, uh, all to hire young people. All to hire young people in disadvantaged areas who are facing barriers, uh, in their lives. So there is millions of dollars. I won't say it's a blanket, but right now, it's as close to a blanket as we have found, that if you know a young person who can work and may have some barriers, we have been told there's an opportunity. And there's not just an opportunity for the work, but, uh, the training, a pathway to long-term, sustainable, uh, living wage employment. Uh, I'm going back here, and I owe you, uh, another tip.
I, I'm Amy Nogami. I'm the supervisor of the Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program at FLSA, which is connected to our Trauma Recovery Center. And staying on this positive note here, I want to say, I hear you, and it sounds like your staff is overwhelmed, and you don't have enough help, and I, I get that, I really do. And, um, all of us that are working on a shoestring budget when we're, you know, we're grant funded, we understand that, and I just want to say, I had a really great experience today. I met with Carrie Willis from Get Connected 815, the reentry program. And trying to remove barriers, because, uh, those folks will come to the hospital once they are alerted by the, uh, police department that there's been a gunshot, you know, GSW. Um, and they've had some barriers to getting in and like giving, um, their information. And I said, so we, we just introduced ourselves today and had a meeting. This was great. I said, what can we do to get you, that like, we're doing essentially, you're doing it in the field, I'm gonna pick up in the hospital and follow through, um, how, maybe I, we can get you in quicker. Like, you know, let your team link with me, grassroots to grassroots. Like, the goal is to reduce the violence in Rockford. And just teaming with each other, I mean, your organization sounds phenomenal. I'd love to know more about it, um, but we, we do a lot of, um, MOUs, you know, connecting with other grassroots organizations. We can't all be funded by the city. All of us, we know how this goes with funding. Whoever's gonna get funding is gonna get the funding, whoever wrote the grant best. Okay, but the thing is, we can still work together, you know, and fill those gaps where, um, you know, we have people that want to volunteer for you, you know, um, like concerned about your staff, you know? Like, they, that could be a lot on them, the trauma that they're enduring, having to do all this work on their own, you know? So just keeping with that, um, positive note, um, you know, I think we are doing the best that we can. There are some things that are out of our control, like there is a shortage of licensed therapists. We would love to hire more therapists for our Trauma Recovery Center. There's a, there is a shortage, like there was a nursing shortage for a while. So we're trying to put people into those positions, but there's a lack of those professionals. So the next thing is, that we're learning is that people live experience, I mean, that, that's, I mean, you can't teach that, you know? So I really value that, and so I'm hoping to bring some of that into this, uh, the Hospital of Violence Intervention Program, um, hiring people with lived experience. Um, and, you know, I just, I think the key is like, we can link together and see what we can do for each other too. Um, I think the city is, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job, but it takes like all of us together. And, um, I just want to say thank you for the work that you guys are doing. And we, we, we are grassroots with the, you know, with your, uh, center there, Family Peace Center, and, uh, we get a lot of referrals from you guys, a lot. And it, it is really rewarding and empowering to see people taking their lives back after they've been affected by gun violence. Like, I, um, I feel your sense of purpose, because I feel it too, you know? So we link up afterwards, but I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we'll go John and Tamika, you.
I just want to, uh, uh, I'm, I'm not here to blast the mayor or the city, but I'm here to talk about what our concerns are. And I'm, I'm glad to see we got people in the room from different areas. For those who don't know me, Renewal Turning Point, we deal with education, training, jobs, uh, domestic violence, and black-on-black crimes, and we deal with a, a lot of youth. When people get in trouble with the system of schools, they call Renewal Turning Point. They shout, "Wanna get Brother John." But in the process, uh, the, uh, the Regrow, the Regrow Grant, the Live, Learn, and Play Grant, when we applied for them grants, we had a hard time receiving, uh, uh, any, any funding. What I learned from Live, Learn, and Play Grant, everything that I talked about doing with transporting the kids to school, taking them to the after-school program. The Park District, uh, years ago said they wasn't gonna be picking up no kids. Now the Park District, which I'm glad to see, the Park District, the YMCA, uh, uh, Mount Zion Church, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, uh, Booker Washington Center is now at these schools picking, picking these kids up. The, uh, uh, the Regrow, why is it that so many, so many organizations that are not grassroots is able to fill out these grants and get these funding? I found out, even though Dr. Reed said, "Well, Brother John, if I did what you did, and even, even though you are a unique person of what you do, I'd be fine in the next 15 minutes." And what it, what we have done, even though we didn't receive no funding, we still are taking on five elementary schools, three new schools, where we transport and picking up kids. We had turned over, uh, out of 359 kids that was expelled out of school. Our organization overturned 19 of them. What can y'all do, and, and, well, see, we gonna do this, with or without y'all, because we feel like if we don't look out for ourselves, ain't nobody else gonna look out for us. So we not here to bash you, but what can we do for y'all to kill and re-attack? Where that, you say the Regrow money supposed to go to grassroots organizations? What, what can we do to be able to fill out the notification, where, uh, and being able to get the funding? Because we gonna do the work with regardless, where this is so hard for us. And, and our neighborhood, every gas station, grocery store, and liquor store is owned by foreigners. On the west side of the river.
I'm gonna answer the Regrow, you're gonna get into all the other things.
I should be sitting up there.
You what?
I should be sitting up there.
There's ways for you to do that. All right, so, uh, Regrow, Live, Learn, Play, Live, Learn, Play, I'm not gonna discuss, it's Rockford Public School. John knows that, but I don't know if everyone knows that. That's a grant, uh, that, uh, Rockford Public Schools used, uh, some of their funding for, uh, sorry, I won't touch it. Regrow, uh, so, uh, Regrow is just, I forget how, what the acronym stands for, to be honest with you. Uh, but we have cannabis shops in the city of Rockford. When we took, when we said, yes, we will have cannabis shops, uh, we did two things. Uh, and when I say we, I'm saying city council, uh, in my center. Uh, one was, if they're gonna come here, let's tax them to the highest percentage that we can, and we did. We get 3%, everyone thinks it's gazillions of dollars, just so you know, I can't, uh, soon we'll be able to actually publicly state all the, uh, dollars, uh, there's some restrictions with the state. Um, it's not as much as you would all think. It is significant, I'm not saying it isn't. Uh, the second thing that we did was, we said, not that we would give all dollars to grassroots organizations, what we said we would do is put all of those dollars, uh, into, uh, supporting individuals most impacted by the failed moron drugs, or, uh, supporting initiatives, uh, in disadvantaged areas. And that's really broad in how we defined it, uh, with some specificity. Uh, what the Regrow grant process was initially, and don't hold me to the exact amount, and if an alderman wants to correct me, I would love it, uh, I'm just gonna say we took about $600,000. And at the time, that's all the funding we had. And we said, uh, we're gonna give this, we have a community relations commission made up of 11 citizens, not aldermen who are elected, just 11 citizens, that's reflected by the community. They're gonna create a grant, uh, proposal, uh, and an organization, anyone could apply, for-profit or nonprofit could apply, uh, and provide what they wanted to do. Uh, we gave out, was it five $10,000, three $50,000, and two $150,000?
Roughly that.
Okay, um, the 5,000, or the 10,000, genuinely, we were thinking quick, how can we get this in, get this out? With that said, there was good and bad to the bad. It was the first time we ever did a grant process like this, uh, with our community relations commission and our city council. Uh, it was slow, it was clunky, it was frustrating. It was frustrating for aldermen, it was really frustrating, uh, for those organizations who applied. We didn't do it that good, we didn't. But the good part, we got it out, and the data we got back about the impact was phenomenal. So there has been, uh, through the Democrat caucus, uh, uh, for the city council, about what can we do, uh, to get more of those dollars in. And so, one, we wanted to review the data. Alderman, uh, very wisely said, hey, before we just jump into this and just do the same thing over again, let's get all this data back. Some of these organizations, it took us a while to get them the money. It also took them a while to spin up their activity and then report back out. As many grassroots organizations said, this was the first time that they were reporting back out, so we had our staff helping them with that. Uh, I think, and I will not speak for city council, uh, especially those here, because they'll yell at me. Um, I do believe you will see, uh, some form of a grant writing with a portion of the Regrow funding coming out soon. I really do. I think it worked, I think it was a good program, and I think it had an impact. And I think now there is a pool of funding that is, uh, significant enough that we can do multiple things. We can do the grant, we can do them, Tamika, and then, uh, former representative.
So, words are from those, thank you for having me. I want to say first that I, I feel like really deep in my heart, like, boy, you're saying beautiful beginnings, John, everybody that's in here that works grassroots, especially mental health, it's ingrained in my heart. And I just want to say that, I wasn't gonna say anything, I just came to listen. But it's exhausting to keep hearing that you can just work with this organization, or we're working with grassroots. It's not that, it's not that easy, and that's not how it works. And there's a lot of cherry picking. There's a lot of, you gotta be with, and good with this person or that person in order for people to work with you. Um, I myself, I started my business, I've been brick and mortar for six years in seven days. Um, thank you Mayor McComer, like, he's been very, like, willing to work with me, has pointed me in a lot of different directions. Um, but I just want to say this, if you're not in a clique, or if you're not like that chosen, or I don't know if it's, I don't know what it is, and I don't want to label it, but it's like an emergency that we let the grassroots people that are out here doing the work, that are really passionate about it, get involved. Because like what I see is, Mayor McComer, you know I love you, don't, it's my duty to say this, but I see, notice the funding opportunity request? I see people that are not passionate about the work, fulfilling it because they have to miss a grant application. And I, I would like to know, like, where the proof is with the effectiveness of these programs. And I'm not talking about any programs in particular, but it's a problem. And I know myself, Jennifer, I'm not picking on you, but I used to do a very successful program with the Family Peace Center. And after my contract was up, I was pushed away. I got in, and there was a young lady that came to me, she said, "We need your kid." She got me in, she said if she didn't do it, it wouldn't be done. And when she left the peace center, I was pushed away, no explanation. Every client that I served there, they still come to me, and I serve them for free. I was pushed away with no explanation and refused to be talked to. So these are people that mental health, these are people that were suicidal, these are people that cried for me not to leave, and I actually gave those reviews to the person that requested them, and I was still passed away. Barber shop talk, I'm a NAMI partner. So I was asked by NAMI, and also other people connected to a barber shop talk, if I could show up and help, because we do a lot of work together. So I showed up at an event, and I was pushed away, like darn near asked to leave the building, and said that I needed permission from the city of Rockford in order to say anything in a barber shop talk meeting. So I was sat in the meetings, and NAMI is very passionate, right? But things that need to be addressed are not being addressed, and the experience is not there, the lived experience is not there. You've got people that are working, but not people that are grassroots, that are passionate about it. So how are we reaching the people? So I just want to say that it's really imperative, like, that we come together as a city, because we're losing a lot of people, and again, I'm not picking on anybody, but just as the firsthand experience person, I think it's an emergency that we work together. You might stop having to be in this club or that club, or getting good with this person in order to do the work. And I've been doing work for free for years. I don't push people away because of money. And I think that is the most important thing about grassroots, to do the work anyways. I have, I actually have a trauma line myself, that I will answer in the middle of the night. I get suicide calls, I get mental health requests, I answer them. But am I able to work with any of these people? No, because I'm not in the.
And they click.
In the click.
Good old voice.
So unfortunately, how it is.
Okay, uh, one, I'm sorry, I don't know all of those experiences, I do know pieces of them right now. There's quite a lot of layers to it.
And all these experiences.
So we'd say, one, when we mentioned results, we may be the only government group right now that is actually measuring all of our results for all of our members, and we can happily provide that. We actually partner, we don't measure it ourselves, we partner with region one that you actually are partnering with for the SEJA grant, um, and so you must be in that clique if you're in the 4.8 million dollar grant, um, but.
It's a different clique.
It's a different one, but, uh, that one must be good, and the others aren't.
And you can get kicked out. You can get kicked out of the check.
I mean, we're using the same group, the data that you will with SEJA. And then I'd be happy to sit down with you, Tamika, and learn more about those experiences, because I don't.
And I just want to have Mayor McComer, that's awesome, R1 is awesome, but it's not R1 that is the issue. It's actually the choices that are made within the organizations. So if you're not in there, you don't see that.
You know, and I wasn't saying R1 was the issue, I'm saying, I was using R1 as, you are part of that group that is doing that. So there's some cliques that are good, obviously, and, uh, and I was just mentioning R1 because that's a group that's measuring all of the data. They're not picking off, sorry, Representative.
You're in there, I'm being ready to meet, but I would like to, uh, to invite the domestic violence. We got an event on the 15th at Christian Union Church on a Saturday, and also on the 22nd at Kingdom Majority Church. We have an event in the community, and we'd love for domestic violence to come from nine from five to come on a Saturday. I've worn eyes in.
Thank you.
All right, come on, I got it.
Representative Wallace?
Thank you, um, I'm so glad to have been here to hear so much discussion, discussion. And I know that a couple of aldermen are probably gonna close it out. Um, the red tape is real, and I, I don't know how to help people get around that. Even as a, during the budget impasse, we fought so hard to get dollars for violence reduction into Rockford, which ISEJA was finally able to do through R1, uh, R1, but it took forever. And that was with the power of the pen. So I, I'm saying that to say that I hope that people continue in their passion, continue in what they're doing. I will say that I don't know if the phrase, I don't believe the phrase is a clique, but I do know that you have to be in the know to be able to kind of connect and access. And I love that Jennifer mentioned earlier the idea of technical assistance. I know that there were times when your office and other local, uh, units of government were doing data training, so people can get certified with the state to go forward with the, um, an RFP or, um, Notice for Funding Opportunity. The state departments on their websites have a lot of information, because a. because again, so much of this is from the federal, and then they'll give it to the state, the state will say, oh, we'll give it to the city, the city council will figure out how to give it out to an organization. There's a lot. But I just want to thank everybody who's like literally on the front line of all that happens in our city. And I'm just hoping that we figure out ways to broaden who we have at the table and do it in a very culturally competent and inclusive way.
Thank you. And one of the issues we had, I would say, I think one of the biggest offenders of the bureaucracy is the state.
Yeah, it is.
We got, so they, you're right, they actually finally did push out some violence prevention dollars.
It's probably from seven years ago.
So, they did it, was it two years ago? They pushed them out two years ago. I'll be honest, everyone said, well, we need to get these dollars to the grassroots organizations. Valid point, right? Let's get it to them. The problem is, those grassroots organizations don't have a full-time accountant, do not have a full-time grant writer, do not have the financial wherewithal and structure or time to deal with the state. What we were advocating for is, hey, instead of taking this pool of, let's say, two and a half million dollars, give it to the city, not that we would spend it, and let us get it out. And let us be the managers of the money, let us collect the report from Tamika, from Beautiful Beginnings, and let us do all of it. We lost that man. So, we did on our own, and truthfully, Jennifer and her deputy director, Andrea, did it on their own, in their own time. If John was here, he would have known it was on the weekends and after five o'clock. Actually, on the phone with these folks, going page by page, because you're right, the state puts out a ton of stuff on their website that, I have a master's degree, I don't want to sit there and read all that stuff, I can't even comprehend all the language that they're using. And so, that is the stuff that I think wish it would be a little simpler to do.
There's still some legislators there.
Alderman there?
Yeah, I don't typically publicly speak on this issue or speak publicly, but I think there's some business valid points, and I'm looking at it from a business perspective. And one of the things I emphasize to my thirteenth ward, it's all about building relationships. Relationships, regardless of the cliques and the personalities. You don't have to lighten as an appointee or an official. I just need to know that you can develop a relationship with X like Z. Because we need to be more about collaboration and coalition building, to the mayor's point. I'm a former entrepreneur. We developed strategic partnerships with majority companies while I was living in Ohio. Very successful, very successful. The community has to develop that mindset in recognizing your strengths and weaknesses. And we do have resources in this community, but you have to be mindful, it's about connecting. It's not about, it's not about personalities. I see a lot of cliques, but either you're gonna, either you're gonna fare our way to get inside that clique, but you have to be about coalition and collaboration building. And we have to get there sooner than later as a community. And right now, we're struggling with it, which baffles me as a former diversity development manager. I get it, I get it. But we have to be open-minded and want to learn and share information. Nobody can take your idea and run with it, nobody. I give everybody the benefit of the doubt. When I get a call, and they ask me how I'm voting, on Monday, you'll know on Monday. So, some people, some people don't like that.
Occasionally, I don't like that way.
But we still love each other. But it's about coalition, collaboration, because we got a lot of unresolved issues in our community. But I'm hopeful for the future, believe me. I'm not overwhelmed, but folks, we have to be about coalition building and collaboration, because that's what the federal government, state government is talking about with these different programs that they come out with. And you have to assess and evaluate, you know, the strengths and weaknesses of your organization.
Thank you. And I will say, we are fortunate, we have some incredibly active aldermen who are with us. We have Alderman Cedro Berrios, we have Alderwoman Gabrielle Trina, Alderman Jeff Bailey, and Alderwoman April Crump, who just had her hand. I'm not even saying, I need your quota on Monday, I'm gonna make a call in advance, I'm gonna make a call in advance, and I do want to know where you're at on this.
I want to disagree a little bit with my colleague as it relates to collaboration. And not even disagree, but maybe suggest to us that because as grassroots person, I'm out there in the trenches doing the thing, you know that I need the technical assistance, you know that I need the treasure and all those things, and you want to be able to provide that, but maybe also be open to, instead of me reaching out to you, you know I'm doing this, you come and say, hey, we heard about you, here's, here's this opportunity, because I'm twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, call me anytime, maybe now we need something, it's just, we're doing, we're professionals on the grassroots level. We also need, because you know we don't have all of the tools, maybe you often have a resource, especially where you are, and you put all these things under the umbrella, part of your umbrella could be knowing who's out there.
Actually, that's a good point, and also, I think one thing that we could add to it is pushing out other opportunities. So, not just the city, so we may find out about an opportunity maybe before or after someone else just was talking to you about Winnebago County Health Department, or Winnebago County Health Tax. Not everyone knows when that was granted, so maybe pushing out those opportunities to make sure that everything.
I just want to say one more thing. Out of love, we really need to be collaborative. My biggest fear is that people that are out here doing this work every day tirelessly, one hundred and fifty percent, two hundred percent commit, but lose their passion for doing what they love to do. They've got the experience, both experience, lived experience, they're right here in the community, but their reach is small, because they can't get in a door, because somebody's holding the door, so they can't. Like, we need to work together, because even the larger organizations, you could need the skill set of the people that are trying to open doors. So, just, just thinking.
Thank you. Any other questions that we have tonight?
Well, this is for Chief. As a grandmother and a citizen, I'm concerned about hearing of firearms, you know? Sometimes I don't know if it's fireworks or if it's gunshots. And sometimes I've wondered, should I call in?
You should always call.
And make parts?
Yeah. So, I tell people all the time, if you're not sure, make the call. It's our job to come up determined. Don't ever feel like you're bothering the police, because that's the job we're paid to do. So, if you're not sure of what it is, and actually what happens is also, when I get multiple people that make that phone call, somebody might say, it sounds like, it sounds like it was, you know, maybe about four or five blocks from me. I get another neighbor says, it sounds like it was like a block away. Somebody else says, it sounds like it was next door. We're able to drill down that area. So, I'll tell you always, err on the side of caution, make a call.
And if you heard those gunshots, where are they, where would you trajectory?
Oh, nine-one-one, that's a nine-one-one call, Alderman.
Other questions? So, we'll be around for a little bit.
One more question.
Yeah.
I heard somebody mention the school district and the park district. What efforts are being made to bring other taxing bodies to their table? And the crime prevention table, and Leo?
Okay. So, I'm gonna touch on a couple, and then Jen can touch on it. So, one, we as the city council approved a host community agreement with Hard Rock Casino, in that the park district will get for ten years, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year towards youth programming. We have assisted the park district, truthfully, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in various initiatives. Some are directly towards youth, some touch on youth, but are not just solely. From the school district, I'll let Jennifer start, and I'll probably have.
So, we, with the park district, we park district.
I'm Ryan, how are you? I'm, uh, shift into the six-thirties, so, you know.
Hey, you mind if I go first, my battery's about to die. Can I interview you too?
Who are you?
Tony, is that alright? I'm a Republican town, is that cool? I'm actually the person that, the lady cop, you shook her hand, and she tased me breath-pedally over and over in my own yard. Do you remember that? Her name's Kimberly Kylie, you shook her hand. I took my case to trial, and the judge didn't know what a peace officer was. A judge didn't know what a peace officer was, shook her hand, her name's Kimberly Kylie. I run a small YouTube channel. I was kicked off a public sidewalk in Rockford Mass Transit District, at Rockford, Illinois, right down the street here. I have, currently have a PO against Rockford Mass Transit District. I can't ride their bus, I was just filming, as we are right now. I was walking down a public sidewalk, and I was attacked by metro security officers. And he grabbed me up, yanked me, pushed me off the sidewalk, pushed me in front of the buses. And I called the police, and the police kicked me off the sidewalk as well, and did nothing to this gentleman. I had a detective, interviewed with the detective, and they said they're not gonna press charges on this gentleman. I told him I'm free press, you understand what free press is? Everybody is free press. So, I'm wondering, like, what can we do? I was wanting to have like a meeting with you maybe about this, is this is really important, because?
Yeah. So, first, thanks for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you.
I would say first, if you could send me a note with an email
For sure.
More specific date, time, just so I can narrow it down, learn more about it.
For sure.
Happy to connect.
That'd be good, man, that'd be good. Thank you, man, you're awesome, thank you. Ms. Carly Ree, can I talk with you for a second?
What's up?
My name's Tony Wester, I was kicked off a public sidewalk, Rockford Mass Transit District. I'd like to have like a little meeting with you about that, about your officers, yeah.
Okay, so, do you have a complaint you need to file?
Yeah, I'd like to file a complaint and get it going, have a little meeting, sit down.
So, I don't investigate the complaints?
For sure.
So, that comes from our Office of Professional Standards?
Alright.
I believe you've spoken with Lieutenant Davis?
I have, yep.
Okay.
I've, I made a complaint over the phone.
Okay.
By having it, writing it, oh, yeah, I could go down and do that, and then you'd have a meeting with me about this, because?
I don't need to meet with you about a complaint, because it's gonna be handed out for an.